Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the town council meeting to order Monday, June 3rd, 2024, and I'm going to ask Colin Craig to come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Come on up here.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Colin's going to sit here. Colin is our kid mayor from Emerson Williams School. It's our last kid mayor program. I'll talk a little bit after he reads his essay. But Colin, relax, take your time, talk right in and like a phone. And whenever you're ready, Colin, you should go ahead.
My name is Colin Craig, and I am honored to represent Emerson Williams.
You don't have to get right on the mic.
We can move closer, comfortable.
You're turning around the shot. You're good, just like that.
I am honored to represent Emerson Williams as kid mayor. I want to make a difference in our community for the better by becoming a leader that listens carefully and models appropriate behavior, values, and ethics. I am present, visible, and approachable to students, staff, and teachers. In my free time, I like to swim and hike as well as code and invent. I am inspired by people who do good things throughout their community. When I'm older, I want to go to MIT or Massachusetts Institute of Technology and become an engineer and coder. I want to engage students of Weathersfield Public Schools in my initiatives to work collaboratively to better the Weathersfield community by being inclusive, picking up garbage that pollutes our earth, and helping our community. I also want to create challenges that include citizens to help our community. An example of this is whoever can pick up the most trash wins. And if you win, you get a T-shirt that says "Community Challenge Winner." This will help make Weathersfield a better place for us and the plants and animals that live in here. I also want to encourage people to make signs that say things like "Don't litter" or "Stop the trash." Another thing I would like to do is donate bucks to children's hospitals because everyone should feel the feeling of a good buck. I am confident that we can do anything if we work together, work hard, and be kind. Thank you, Mr. Lesser and the Weathersfield Town Council, for welcoming me this evening.
I'm going to take a photo, so parents, if you want to come up, we're going to take a photo. And then I'm going to say a couple of words about the program, and then we'll go to our next party. You did great, great job. Yeah, you in the front?
I like this T-shirt. I think you should do that.
Community Challenge.
Yeah.
There you go. So, Mom, do you let us know if you can see everybody? Thank you.
Great.
Great job. Colin, that was amazing, and I know your parents are proud, and the whole community is proud of you. So that was the last of our series of five kid mayors representing the five elementary schools. It was a great program. We will be doing it again next year. And we got to take our students to the Capitol, which was a great experience for them. They got to witness democracy, and we also learned a lot from them. And we heard a lot of great ideas from our students. Tonight, we heard about Community Challenge T-shirts and kindness. And last week, I'll tell you a quick story. Last week, we had Lila Tierney from Hammond School talk about kindness. That was her platform, and that was Monday night, May 20th. And the very next day, May 21st, I had a meeting at Earley Market with a gentleman about an issue that he has in town. And as I was going to pay my bill, I paid for coffee for the two of us. I didn't know the person, but she said, "Are you Mayor Lesser?" And I said, "Yes." She said, "There's a gentleman in here that paid your bill, took care of it for you." And that's kindness just spreading, and it's something we all need to spread. So that was just really nice, and we paid for it. And I walked up there, and someone had already taken care of my bill. So I know, Colin, you mentioned kindness, and you mentioned also trash pickup and your platform, and thank you for participating in this. So again, thank you very much. Next on our agenda is we have... Oh, sorry, I've already messed up. Thank you. It's good to have a good helper around. So for the roll call, Sue.
Mayor Lesser.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Forrest.
Here.
Counselor Bailey.
Here.
Counselor Carbone.
Here.
Counselor Clancy.
Here.
Counselor Jurek.
Here.
Counselor Rhodes.
Here.
Counselor Timbrow.
Here.
Counselor Zambrello.
Here. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue, and thank you, Mr. Town Manager, for reminding me what I'm supposed to be doing. Next on the agenda is we have a presentation by the director of the Connecticut Age Well Collaborative, Alyssa Norwood. And I got to meet Alyssa at the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities in November of '22 and saw her presentation and learned of the groundbreaking work that she and her organization is doing. And then also got to meet her again this past conference of New Stars event, November 23. I was there with the town manager. I know Counselor Carbone attended that same session. And in the year and a half that we, since we first met, got some opportunities, which I'm very grateful for, to partner with Alyssa and her team on the very important issues that they work on: aging, disability, dementia, and some other things she's going to talk about. And Weathersfield was first in the state of Connecticut, which we're proud of, to be part of the Daring Dialogue program, to talk about these issues as a community. And I'm grateful that we had the opportunity to be first and to kind of help pioneer that with you and your staff. So thank you for that, and please come up for a few minutes and talk about the great work that you're doing. Everybody wants to know what these banners are that I couldn't put together, but with your help and the town manager, they were put together. So Alyssa, please.
Wonderful. More lesser and to the rest of the town council and to all of you tonight. Thank you so much for the opportunity to meet you all and celebrate what's really an incredible achievement. So you mentioned more lesser, that Weathersfield is really good at being first. It's part of your history, it's part of who you are. And it's not surprising to me, sitting in this meeting and the tone that you set at the beginning, and your frame was kindness. And what's interesting and not surprising that Weathersfield was first in this work is in the end, there are lots of different layers to making a community aging, dementia, and disability inclusive, but in the end, really, it all starts with kindness. So to tell you a little bit about myself, thank you again for the introduction. My name is Alyssa Norwood, and I'm director of an initiative called the Connecticut Age Well Collaborative. And the work is all about partnering with all of you, with town governments, with your staff, and with all of you as residents to recognize that we live in a really exciting moment in human history because people are living longer and healthier lives than ever before. But there's also challenge in that because we've not thought through and designed our communities in a way that fully contemplates the massive changes that are happening. I live in a different town. I live in a single-family home. All my bedrooms are on the second floor, and my house isn't situated such that if I had a dramatic immediate change, and certainly long-term as my mind and body changes, that I could necessarily comfortably stay there. So these are the conversations that we're having all over Connecticut to think proactively as the proportion of population in our towns start shifting. What do we need to do beyond all the robust programming that we have? We have great senior centers, we have great social services and supports. But holistically, how do we plan communities across all topics, all areas? Housing, transportation, public spaces that account for this new reality? So it was interesting, when we started doing this work, we discovered that there's a deeply internalized bias that we all hold, where all the product of causes and conditions. And we live in a world that values youth, productivity, efficiency, speed, and there are all kinds of stories that we've internalized. And for those of you who've never taken the implicit biases test, you can Google it, and you can't cheat this test, but it takes a few minutes, and it reveals these deeply held beliefs we all have that somehow distills down to this notion that being old or being disabled is somehow bad. So the work of the Daring Dialogues and the work that this community has done has really been groundbreaking in bringing together local elected officials, staff, and members of this community to talk from a place of personhood, right? Everybody has professional expertise and learned experience, but from a place of deep personhood because we can't really meaningfully do the policy work that we need to do until we recognize that we all have these deeply held beliefs. So one of the ways that we're starting to try to undo some of this bias and reveal it, and it's not our fault, it's just the world that we're conditioned to, is through a statewide campaign called Every Age, Every Ability. And there are a series of posters, you can see them on our website, where we've selected with community input words like resilient, capable, and invite people to think about, well, when you think about somebody who's resilient or capable or connected, who comes to mind first? So you might do that, and you might think about it. And then in these posters, we'll show you the images might not necessarily match the image that first came into your head. And we invite people through this campaign into that space of a little cognitive dissonance to say, "That's not the person that first came to my mind when I saw the word thriving or connected," and it's a beginning of this undoing and this self-awareness. So should we do the big reveal? Should we flip them around? So as the first community in the state of Connecticut to embark in this process, we are gifting, our organization is gifting to the town of Weathersfield, this set of posters, and we invite you to use them in your community and put them on display, and we hope will be a conversation piece. Another part of our campaign, and another gift to all of you for being the trailblazers in this work, is we decided that this is not just a conversation that takes place later in life, but across the lifespan. So with the help of a national publishing company, we wrote a book. It's called A Kid's Book About Ageism. Came out in March. You can find it on Amazon, Barnes &amp; Noble, and other booksellers. And we are gifting a copy to the town of Weathersfield, and we hope that you will use it wherever you see most fit, whether it's in the town library or in the school system and the associated discussion guide. So we thank you all for your spirit of co-creation and collaboration, and know that you've really catalyzed a movement. And there are towns all across Connecticut now that want to do what you did, but you were first.
Well, thank you, Alyssa, and it's your great work and the groundbreaking work of your organization that we are thrilled to partner with. We are thrilled to be first, and this is the Every Age, Every Ability campaign throughout the state, and Weathersfield is proud to be first. And we thank you for being here, we thank you for your words of support, and we look forward to partnering with you more in the future.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any quick questions, Alyssa, before we move on? Any comments? Good. Thank you so much.
I have one. I'm going to take a picture.
We can take one with you. Would you like to be in it?
Yes, I would, so thank you.
Do we have a...
Sure, we have a volunteer on the field.
Thank you. So council, again, you're used to this.
We get in front of the posters.
Do we want to go in front of the posters, Alyssa?
Yeah. Well, if you're comfortable, you're not seeing.
Whatever. I'm wearing jeans. Okay, so you look very comfortable. Alyssa, come in. Everybody, please. Emily, you're not in. So come, come to town. Here we go. Are you in?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Wonderful, thank you.
Alyssa, thank you. Thank you for finding what you're doing.
Thank you so much.
That's more moon back there. Alyssa, please with the up around. Yes, so these are staying up around town. And again, we are the first in the state to get them, and we're proud to have them. And again, thank you so much, Alyssa. So the next item on the agenda is we have another proclamation. We usually do one or two a month, and tonight's proclamation is recognizing Pride Month for June 2024, and I will read the proclamation. Whereas June 2024 marks the 55th annual celebration throughout the United States of lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, questioning, intersex, asexual, and more, Pride Month. And whereas the month of June was chosen to commemorate the dedication and bravery of those who led the 1969 uprising at Stonewall Tavern in Greenwich Village, which sparked the modern liberation movement. And whereas the town of Weathersfield believes in working together with all the members of our community to facilitate open relationships, provide safety, dignity, and a welcoming environment for our residents and visitors. And whereas Weathersfield recognizes and values the contributions of each and every resident that each and every resident makes to work, recreation, and civic life. And whereas LGBTQIA+ youth are especially high-risk of experiencing discrimination, mistreatment, and violence, and have increased suicide rates, the town is committed to ensuring that they are safe, valued, and supported. Now therefore be it resolved that June 2024, we declare Pride Month in the town of Weathersfield, and that all residents be encouraged to recognize and acknowledge the contributions of this community as we continue to advance the principles of liberty, equity, inclusivity for all. And witness thereof, I have set my hand and caused the seal of the town of Weathersfield to be affixed this third day of June 2024. Thank you. Moving on to item... Mr. Mayor, if I may. Yes. Can we have a moment of silence for Trooper First Class? Yes, yes, please, Rich, thank you. Thank you, Counselor Bailey. Very tragic. Moving on to item C, hearings. This is a public hearing, C1. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. This is for an amendment to O24-006, an ordinance amending Article 13 of Chapter 10 of the Code of Ordinances to change the name of the Weathersfield Heritage Commission to the Weathersfield Tourism and Cultural Commission, and this is at the request of that commission.
So this is a public hearing just on this item, C-1, and I open up for any public comment on this particular item. And if there isn't any, we'll close the hearing and go on. Any public comment about the name change? Seeing none, we will move on to regular public comment. And I'm going to read the same statement I read each council meeting. There are two public comment sections on the agenda, one now and another toward the end of the meeting. During each public comment period, members of the public will have five minutes to speak on any issue. We have added a lighted timer to the podium to help each speaker be aware of the time remain for them to address the council. Once you step to the podium, please state your name and address. And at this point, the green light will come on showing your five minutes has begun. The yellow light will come on when you have one minute left, and at that time, please begin to wrap up your comments. The red light will come on when you have reached five-minute limit and will be asked to complete your comments. I ask that you address your comments to the entire council and refrain from speaking directly about one individual council member or the audience. I also ask that you refrain from any derogatory comments or personal attacks. Please remain respectful. This section is for public comment, and the council does not generally engage in dialogue during this portion of the agenda. If any follow-up is needed, please leave your contact information with the town clerk, and the town manager will follow up with you. Anybody from the public wish to speak at this time? Sally?
Sally Keating, 109 Church Street. I am here tonight to talk about the elementary schools, subject near and dear to my heart. There are some in the town who think that the schools need minor fixes, and that is clearly not the case. The results of the Board of Education Community Survey on the future of the schools is now on the Weathersfield Public Schools website. If you haven't read it, please do. It's shocking, it's sad, eye-opening, surprising, whole host of variety. I think all residents should also read the comments because from what I see, what I hear from other parents, people don't know about the condition of the schools. I'd like you to read a few of the comments for you. This one is from an employee of the school system. Working in our town's buildings sheds light on the terrible conditions the schools are in. Many residents would probably refuse to work in such conditions, and at times, I worry about my own health. Mold, mice infestations, mildew, and haphazard fixes to decades-old problems are everywhere in my building. Inconsistent heat cooling, heating and cooling, where some classrooms, kids have to wear coats all winter, and some classrooms so hot that kids can't focus in the warm weather. Even when we file work orders, they are either ignored, dismissed, or take months to complete. Highcrest is a dangerous, unsafe, and unhealthy environment for all students and staff. The roof leaks continue despite what is said at town council meetings, resulting in hazardous levels of mold and mildew, not to mention the ceiling tiles that randomly fall out. Students and staff work around garbage barrels, buckets, and yellow caution tape and breathe in the stench of mold and mildew. There are no windows to open to allow for fresh air. The exterior doors leading from every classroom are a safety concern. There is also no space in Highcrest to accommodate children with severe behavioral issues, which we are constantly asked to provide services for because the district does not want to pay for outside educational costs. These children and their pairs are given closets and storage areas to work from. Finally, the upper grades often have class sizes of 24 to 27 students in rooms that are far too small for such a large amount of larger-sized students. It is beyond my realm of thought that anyone could think these are satisfactory working and learning conditions. If any community member came to spend even just a week at Highcrest, they would understand the severity of the issue. There were so many, I had a hard time narrowing down which ones I wanted to talk about. I'll just read a portion, two sentences, from this one as a public school educator of 13 years. So this person has some experience. Since moving here four years ago, I have heard more serious conversation about the land of the farm than how we are going to improve the conditions of our schools. Due to this, young parents in this town are currently looking into magnet and private schools for their kids to begin their schooling careers, and that includes our family. As a teacher at Highcrest, I am very concerned for the health, safety, and security of our building. I have seen multiple principals try very hard to make sure that our building is as safe as possible. However, is it really safe? In addition, and I feel that our building has made so many people sick. The custodial staff works very hard, but the 60-plus-year-old heating ventilation system isn't clean. Every time I turn the heat on, I wonder if it's safer for my students to put on our jackets on and freeze instead of breathing in whatever the heater's blowing out into the classroom. So after reading through all of these comments, first of all, thank you to all the people who took the time to write down the issues, to really describe what's going on because I think it's so important because, like I said, people in town don't know, a lot of parents don't know what happens in these schools. A couple of themes that have really come to light. One, number one, is maintenance. We do not maintain these buildings properly. If Sally Katz was here, she would tell you the same thing. You know, I know you just went through all the budget, but you know...
Sally, I'm going to ask you to summarize.
Okay, all right. Got lots more I could say. Last thing is, we will be having referendums, referendum or referendums. Something that is really concerning me is this is not a red issue, it is not a blue issue. This is about the children, this is about our future, our property values. We can't make this political, we have to do the right thing.
Thank you, Sally.
Thank you.
Further public comment? Mr. Young, and then Kevin, I saw your hand, too. Bob?
Good evening. Robert Young, 20, Copper Mill Road. I'd like to continue on the fallacies of our current budget that you just approved. And I'd like to point out some of the issues that, I don't know why you missed them, but when we look at the account called Community and Economic Development, Department 130, what I notice in here is that you have a travel and training expense for your director. Realize this is a group that only has three FTEs, three people in. Then it's going to be, and it's being proposed to include three more. But here we have travel and training for the director. For last year, that's 2023-24, it was $1,200. Town manager is recommending for '24-'25, $6,500. This is an increase, large increase, of 441%. We also have training, travel and training for our town planner. Again, this is only a group that had three people. Now it's proposed to have six. In 2023-24, it was $600 for the town planner. In 2024-25, it's $6,500 for the town planner. This is 980% increase. We have the heritage group, the commission, I should say, with website maintenance and the new initiatives, and the town manager is recommending $10,000. That's a new initiative. Why do we need more new initiatives? Our town manager, he should have been explaining why. He didn't. We have a theme called Heritage Commission, which I think you talked about, to me? Buying ads. Here's a group that the town of Weathersfield since 2018 or so has been funding to build a website and whatever else they're doing, and we're going to buy an ad from them. They're our own group. How can we buy an ad from one of our own organizations? And that ad was for $6,000 last year, and this year is $8,000. That's a 33% increase. We have more. Public service contributions for tourism, and they had a current budget in 2023-24 of $10,500. And this year, our town manager recommended $12,500, which was 19% increase. General office supplies has a current budget of $1,500, and our town manager recommends $3,500 into our budget. And here's a group, again, there were three people last year when it was $1,500. Now there's six people. I don't have an extra finger. It's now 45. That's a 200% increase. Embarrassed! You wouldn't get away with this. You'd be fired. You'd be gone. But here in the town of Weathersfield, we allow these large increases to occur in groups that, if there is any increase, in this case, it doubled, but the cost to the taxpayer tripled. And I think our town manager did a disservice to the taxpayer. He obviously doesn't represent the general population of Weathersfield. We have another department. Oh, look at that. We also had, you know, we have a department called the Police Department. That's department number 142. You're getting collateral cost into the budget. The current budget for '23-'24 was $900. Town manager recommends $9,000. That's a 900% increase, and it went into the budget. The town manager never said a single word during his presentation. Nobody up here caught it, and now it's blurted into our budget.
Mr. Young, five minutes up, and I'll ask you to summarize.
Oh, listen, this is going to go on till Christmas, Mayor. So, you know, why don't you just let me talk?
Your five minutes are up, thank you.
Thank you.
Further public comment? Kevin, did you...
Good evening, Kevin Sullivan, 79 Wright Road. I am a member of the Town's Bicycle and Pedestrian Stakeholders Advisory Committee. I'm also a member of BikeWalk Weathersfield, a nonprofit group in town. I'm here to ask the town council to consider supporting an application on behalf of the town, or actually on behalf of the community, for what is called a bicycle-friendly community award. There is no fee to the town for this application. There actually is no monetary award. It's simply recognition of what the town is doing to support being a bicycle-friendly community. And before I go any farther with everything that I say bicycle this, bicycle that, bicycling is just one part of making Weathersfield and other communities livable. It's like, I think this application is, I would say it's similar to the Tree City USA program that the town has participated in for a long time. It makes the town a place where people want to live. And so if you don't ride a bicycle, it's still something that I would argue people should support because it's great for property values, it's great for business. So the application was prepared by four members of the advisory committee. They all happen to be members of BikeWalk Weathersfield. And it attempts to summarize everything that the town or exists in the community, even whether there's bike racks on buses. So that's not something the town is responsible for, but it's something that's available in the community. So the volunteers did work with town staff to the extent to try to make it as accurate as possible. An entity like BikeWalk Weathersfield could submit the application as it's just representative of the community, but we feel the application would be that much stronger if it were submitted by the town and signed by the town. So we ask for your support with that, and be happy to ask any questions about the application.
Thank you, Kevin, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Further public comment? Anybody else from the public want to speak? Hearing none, we'll move on to item E, council reports. Does any councillor have a report tonight? Councillor Root.
Just a report from the library. They have gone ahead and are ordering the panels for the story walk in Winter Green Woods, and the hope is that it will be open for walking late summer, early fall. Looking back at Brook, hopefully, fingers crossed. So keep your eyes open for that project.
Thank you, councillor Root. Further council reports? Councillor Zambrell.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few. For Bike Pedestrian Advisory Committee, I wasn't able to attend the last meeting, but I was able to catch up with one of the members afterwards. So I'll just mention one thing, because they've been busy. The town is looking for feedback on a couple of proposals to connect bike and pedestrian trails both within Weathersfield and also with Hartford. There have been a couple of meetings on that so far in Weathersfield and Hartford. They are also looking for support on that application, and also considering applying for a micro grant to fund a bike education program. Then for the Historic District Commission, just had their first meeting last week since their chair, Jen Wolfe, passed away. And I just want to say one word about her, because I had known her since I was three. She was my neighbor, I grew up around the corner from where she lived when I was on Hillcrest, so it was a big loss for the community. The two hours wait just to get into the wake, I mean, it was unbelievable. So we'll miss her very much, and I know the commission will, too. They did a great job continuing on with their business, they had a long agenda. And just a couple of highlights from that, the town's plan for the changes to the Cove parking lot were included in that meeting, changes to the island in particular, and movement of the shed. And there was some valuable feedback there from residents that I know the commission appreciated, so that'll be an ongoing discussion that was tabled for now. And there was something that one of the applicants said that I wanted to share with everybody, because I thought it was just such a good quote. She said that, well, I'm not gonna quote her exactly, but essentially, one of the strengths that Weathersfield has when it comes to our historic preservation is that we bring businesses into our historic buildings. So not only are we using them, we're getting people invested in them, we're getting the upkeep, but the town is also able to go into these buildings and enjoy them. And that's something that really is a strength, and I appreciated her words on that. And then lastly, the School Building Committee, which was just meeting before, they might even still be in there, they are hard at work. They've toured all of the school buildings to just get an assessment there, waiting on the Board of Ed's proposal, which I believe was voted on tonight. I'm hoping that that was done, so that they can all discuss it at the next meeting and move forward with those plans. But it's still, it's a really good group of passionate people with a lot of knowledge, and they are so eager to get going. And for the middle school chiller part of it, the grant was approved, they're just waiting, the town has signed their contracts, it just might be some time before the state works it all out on their end for all the applicants. So hopefully, we'll be hearing more about that part soon.
Thank you, councillor Zambrell, you've been busy. Appreciate those reports. Any other council reports? Councillor Carbone.
It's less, good evening, by the way, it's less of a report and more kind of a follow-up question with you. Councillor Zambrell, I know with the Park and Rec Board, they were really excited to get the proposal back to the Historic District Commission, and I was just curious why it was tabled.
There were...
The Cove, sorry, let me be clear.
Yeah, so I know one of the, the commission really wanted to see more visuals. Right now, it was just kind of some preliminary images, and it was difficult to really envision what it's going to look like as such an important entrance to this very key part of our town. So that was their main concern, like, let's get some real, not necessarily renderings, but something to that effect, where we can kind of see what is this going to look like when people enter this part of our town.
Okay, because I know we're anxious to start getting some work done there.
I know, I know.
It's kind of a big hurdle. All right, thank you. I'm good, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Carbone. Any further council reports? Hearing none, we'll move on to the next item, council comments. Does any councillor have any comments tonight? Councillor Root.
So this is, I could have done this in reports, but I wasn't thinking about it as a report. As a mental health professional in the community, as well as somebody who has been watching the impact of social media in particular on kids, there's a book that has come out, The Anxious Generation, I have my copy right here. And the school board, the library, WAC, organizations all across town are encouraging not just parents, but people who care about kids, to read it and engage in conversations about it. Since 2010, the rates of mental health among teenagers, particularly teenage girls, but teenage boys as well, middle schoolers and high schoolers, has plummeted. And when you look at the data and the research, there are all kinds of reasons. We can say, there's COVID, there's this, there's that. One of the single common links across that age group around the world is access to social media. What it does to image, what it does to social interactions, one of the things that the author talks about is that we overprotect our children in real life, we prevent them from taking healthy risks, from experiencing failure, from making mistakes, from falling out of a tree and breaking their arm, which, you know, it happens. We prevent them from doing any of those things, and we underprotect them online. And so there are these two things that are going on, and in the book, what he talks about is that communities can come together and change this, and have a significant impact on the mental health of our kids. And again, as somebody who's practicing in the field, it is devastating, the numbers of kids, LGBTQ kids, right, but all kids. It is devastating, the numbers of kids who are experiencing mental health crises, and this is something that we can actually do to make a difference. So please read the book, there's gonna be community conversations that are going on. So I invite everybody to read it and be a part of that conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Root, and I look forward to the community conversations. Any other council comments? Councillor Carbone.
A lot has happened in the past couple weeks, and I'm gonna let you comment on the Memorial Day Parade, and the fireworks, and all that great stuff, so I'm not gonna say how wonderful those things were. Although I didn't go to the fireworks, because I was doing something different, and I'm sad, actually, that Alyssa left, because I wanted to mention to her that, I don't know if everyone knows, but I'm a former Mrs. America, and I now volunteer with the Ms. Senior Connecticut America pageant system. I'm a bona fide member, which is, I don't know if I should be excited about that or sad, we all are aging, but these women are incredible, they are talented, they are smart, they are beautiful, and they have reached the age of elegance in what we call, and I was just thinking, connecting it with this, really embracing our seniors, especially women, because in the society that embraces youth, it's especially our women that are impacted, where we're told we become invisible, and we're less than because we don't fit a certain image anymore. Our skin looks different, our hair looks different, and menopause should be something, although we shouldn't be bringing this up in town council, right, to be something to fear, but it's not. And I just encourage all of you to, you know, embrace our elderly women, tell them how beautiful and amazing, how impactful they are. And if you ever are looking for something to do, you have to wait for another year. But the Ms. Senior Connecticut America, I mean, there's 80-year-olds up there in full-on glitz, tap dancing their hearts out, I've never seen anything like it, it's absolutely amazing. But anyways, I just wanted to say that, so thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you, councillor Carbone, I appreciate the spirit in there, and I hope you can connect with Alyssa Nulowitz, and maybe talk about doing something together.
I think we need a crown up there somewhere.
Yeah, thank you. Any other counts, thank you very much. Councillor Zambrell.
Just one quick thing, the pride flag ceremony is tomorrow at 4 o'clock outside Town Hall. Ms. Connecticut will be there, whom I'm really excited to meet, but I hope everybody can come.
Thank you, councillor Zambrell. Further council comments? I have a few, as councillor Carbone previewed them. I have three. First, I wanna talk about the Memorial Day Parade, and thank all the town staff who worked so hard on it. Thank all my fellow councillors and town manager who marched, we had a great turnout, it's maybe the best turnout of councils I can remember. I do want to make special mention that this Thursday, June 6th, is the 80th anniversary of D-Day, and that was the theme of our parade. And 150,000-odd allied troops stormed the beaches of Normandy, France, and it was the pivotal battle that liberated Europe and saved all of us. And to all our people, fallen heroes, they sacrificed their lives so that we could be free today, and we think of them this time of year, Memorial Day time, but also the 80th anniversary of D-Day. And the survivors of D-Day, they're in their late 90s, hundreds, and we certainly thank them, and again, we wouldn't be free without all of them. Secondly, the fireworks, which was Saturday night, it was a beautiful night in the 80s. Those that went last year, it was in the 30s, so we were lucky with the weather this year. Again, tremendous thank you to the town staff who did an amazing job. I'm told we had about 6,000 people there, it felt like more, but 6,000 is a good number, it certainly felt like more as you were leaving, those of you went and had to brave the traffic or walking, there was a lot of people. And lastly, I'll just mention the Chamber Commerce event yesterday, which was the car show at the Webb Elementary. I got to sit in a 1958 Porsche, which was quite a car, and there were, if you like cars, and I'm not a huge car person, but they had amazing cars, it's a chamber event, and they do another one in October. So anybody who's a car enthusiast, I think it's October 13th, but it's in mid-October at the Cove Park. And that's it for council comments, unless anyone else has anything else, we'll move on to town manager report. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just very quickly, just to follow up what you stated about all the staff work on the Memorial Day Parade, the fireworks, again, it's a huge lift for our staff, particularly public safety, the police department, the fire department, ambulance out there, we had everybody participating in both of those events, so that was a lot of work, and of course, physical services and parks and rec for all of their help. Just to shout out for the next big event, which is coming up next Wednesday, and that's the high school graduation, which will also be another large event involving a lot of different departments, but certainly, it's a celebration of the achievement of those students that are graduating next week, so hopefully, the weather is as cooperative for that, because last year also was a little bit touch and go, but we made it through that. And just also to remind folks that the Weathersfield Chamber is having to make a splash business event, which is their showcase and mixer for the local businesses here in town, so it's an opportunity for anybody can go, it's free, it's at Keene Memorial, and people can go through and see some of the businesses we have here in town, and try some of their fare, so please get out there and do that. That concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Town Clerk, Sue.
Yes, I just wanted to let everybody know that we have started to issue dog licenses for the 2024-2025 dog season, and June will be a very busy month.
Thank you, Sue. Item I, we have I-1 and I-2, we have two bids, I guess, as we've been doing in practice, we'll take a motion first, and then we'll have discussion. So do I have a motion? Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I hope to authorize the town manager to award the Architectural and Engineering and Interior Design Services contract to the library renovation project to Silver Petricelli and Associates pursuant to the request for qualifications number 2024-03, in an amount not to exceed 125,000.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, do I have a second?
Second.
Second councillor, Zambrell. Mr. Town Manager, I don't know if it's the library...
I would suggest Brooke or Vlada, you'd like to get up and give a quick overview of what we're seeing here? Or both of you?
She sat down, so it's you.
Oh, thanks. So we're very excited, we had a selection committee in November meet with a bunch of firms, a request for qualifications was put out, received, I believe, 10 submissions, and the committee reviewed those blind of costs, because it was a request for qualifications as opposed to, I believe, a request for proposals. We did then, we reviewed all the material, and then we interviewed five, five of the firms, and made a recommendation, went and saw some of their work, did receive back-of-fee proposal, so we did factor that in, and narrowed it down and made a recommendation to the building committee, who reviewed the selection committee's work. The selection committee is made up of, was made up of town staff, as well as the library board chair, the building committee is the library board, myself, Vlada, other town staff, and then the friends as well. And they made a recommendation to the library board, who then is asking for council to approve for the town manager to take this action.
Thank you, Brooke. Questions for Brooke? Anybody? Councillor Carbone.
Hi, it's not really for you, I'm sorry, it's more for the town manager. So this was a process that was started quite a while ago, and the funds have already been set aside, is that through ARPA, or is that through the grant?
This is through a state bond grant.
Okay. And it's already there, and so the 125, even though the award's for 85, is just for kind of like, if it goes over budget, incidental, so...
Yeah, so there's an amount in there for any kind of cost overruns we might see as part of this, but it's not to exceed that amount. And generally, whenever you do a major construction project like this, you assign about 10% of the total cost of the project for architectural fees, and that's what we've done here.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear for everybody who's watching, the money's already been set aside for that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Carbone. Further council questions? Hearing none, then we'll take a vote. All in favor, please signify, am I saying aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Aye's have it. Thank you, Brooke.
Thank you, and we're very excited for this project to come to fruition, it's been years in the making, and we're very grateful for the advocacy that the council has done in our state reps. Thank you.
You're excited, we're excited. Thank you. Moving on to item two, do I have a motion? Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Move the council to award the contract for Town Council Chamber audiovisual broadcast upgrades to Valley Communications Systems, Inc., and to authorize the town manager to execute all related agreements and contracts.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, do I have a second?
Second.
Second councillor, Clancy. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This project is another one that's been long in coming, as I'm sure many of you have heard or seen, if you've watched any meeting online, that our equipment is quite outdated, particularly the backroom equipment back there that runs everything and allows it to be streamed. All the cameras are standard definition and everything these days for streaming services require high definition. require high definition, so this proposal is to improve, replace the cameras with high definition, to replace all the equipment in the back room, to allow for better streaming and quality for the public, and also to replace the audio system as part of this process. So, the whole experience for the user at home will be much better once completed. The money for this was, $90,000 was allotted to this through ARPA funds by the previous council, and there's, this bid is for slightly over that, and the additional funds would come from the CMEF IT reserves. So, the money's there, and so, if we can get this approved, we can get them in here during your council break, when we don't have, when we have just the one meeting a month, so we can schedule them and get them, get this wrapped up within a couple of months.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Questions of the town manager? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Ayes have it. Next on the agenda is item J, the consent agenda. Do I have a motion? Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, council votes. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Ayes have it. Okay. Moving right along to item K-1, as is traditional, we'll start with the motion. Do I have a motion? Mr. Deputy Mayor.
I move to amend Article 13 of Chapter 10 of the Code of Ordinances to change the name of the Weathersfield Heritage Commission to Weathersfield Tourism and Cultural Commission as attached.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Clancy. This is just a name change, but I don't know, Mr. Town Manager, if there's any comments to make, but it's.
Nothing beyond what was stated for the public hearing.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on this? It's just a name change of the commission? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Ayes have it unanimous. Sue?
There is no unfinished business L, there's no new business M.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I have something on our new business. I would like to make a motion to add to the following to the agenda under M1, an amendment to our flag policy that in certain circumstances, as in the, the death of our trooper first-class pelleteer, a formal request does not have to be moved through the town council and with respect for one day or duration of a specific event, that a flag can be flown.
So, we, we have a motion. Thank you, Councilor Bailey. Do we have a second?
This should be to add the item to the agenda first, and then you would.
Okay, so.
Motion for.
So, let's, thank you for procedural. So, Councilor Bailey has made a motion to add an item, and discuss the item, which we'll get back to. Do I have a second on adding the item?
Second.
All in favor of adding the item?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed to adding the item? Ayes have it. Councilor Bailey, you may proceed.
On Wednesday, June 5th, I would like the Police Lives Matter flag to be flown in honor of our trooper who was killed. One day, I think it's the least we can do. We talk about leading the community and leading the state and, you know, raising bees on farms, but I think this has a strong validity to it. He's one of our first responders, be it police, fire, or MS, and deserves at least that from us.
Thank you, Councilor Bailey. Do I have a second on the, the main motion? And we've already heard the, I think we still need a second on the main motion. Is that correct? Are we, are we okay?
No, you need.
We have, so we have the amendment we passed.
So, was that a motion?
A motion to raise the flag on June 5th.
June 5th, one day.
When is that being voted to add to the agenda?
We voted, so we added to the agenda, and now he's motioning to add to, so it's on the, it's on our agenda now.
Yeah.
And now, he's, correct me if I'm wrong, Councilor Bailey, asking for one day motion to fly that flag on June 5th. Is that correct? Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Second by Councilor Timbrow. Discussion on the motion. Councilor Dirk.
Thank you, Mayor. So, does this mean that we're amending the policy itself? The flag policy?
Mr. Town Manager, I think the policy allows.
I am not asking for it every June 5th, just this one.
Yeah, the, the policy allows for the council to vote and approve flags to be flown, so it would not be amending the policy, it would just be adding a flag to the list for this special, for this.
But what I mean is, it's amending the how do we proceed about flying flags. There is a protocol, how we do it, and do we do how, how much advancement, and all of that. So, are we changing the policy or just making a one-time decision, which is not what the policy is about?
That's a question for the motion.
Actually, I was just thinking the same thing. Sorry, sorry. However, when we added the UN flag, that we didn't really give that any discussion or much thought. That was added in the, in the beginning of a meeting or during the meeting. So, if you're looking for, and plus, we didn't have any time to, we didn't have 30 days, you don't have 15 days. He just died last week, and the funeral's on Wednesday, so that, I don't know if.
Well, I totally understand that. I'm not against the flag. I totally understand what's going on.
But I know you're talking about timings.
Yeah, so exactly. So, the question is, is this going to be a new policy, or we can just come in as a town council without prior notice, which would then mean that we're changing the policy itself?
I guess that would be the town manager question.
So, I'm just trying to figure out what exactly are we going to do here? Are we going to change the policy or?
This is a discussion, and we have a motion on the floor, which we will ultimately probably vote on, but Councilor Clancy, do you?
I have a question as well, which I would probably address the town manager with, which is, I assume that we're going to lower the flag to half-mast if we haven't already, is that correct?
It's already done.
Is that done, that's done by the governor, and then we follow through?
Yes.
And do, do we ever lower the, put the flag at half-mast at the discretion of the town manager, or is it always just set by the governor? I mean, is that something you can do without changing the flag policy, I assume? And probably we're planning to do?
Well, the flag policy, it's dictated by the governor's office, or, or higher.
So, is it a half-mast now?
It is.
I didn't even notice.
Yes.
And it's going to stay until following the funeral?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Clancy?
No, I'm just thinking. I, I'm done talking.
Sorry. So, I would say, I thought of that too, given that that was the governor's directive to have the flags flown at half-mast, which is done for a variety of different things, but of course, in tragic circumstances, and this would be in addition to that, doing the Blue Lives Matter flag on that day in solidarity with the rest of the state.
Thank you, Councilor Timbrow. Further council comments or questions? Deputy Mayor Forrest.
Has the governor ordered, is it, what, I, sorry, is it Police Lives Matter flag? What is, what is the Police Lives Matter flag?
I didn't know either, I just pulled it up, that's.
It's the blue line.
It's the blue line.
Flag, and it represents law enforcement in the country, so it's just it.
Well, there's, there's several different flags, and this came up with, with a previous flag. So, there's a, the Thin Blue Line flag, there's the Blue, the Police Lives Matter flag, which actually says police lives matters with the blue line in it, and then there's Blue Lives Matter, which is kind of a combination of those two. There's lots of different flags, we need to be very clear on exactly what flag we're talking about.
So, then I would say, I mean, if I could look at it, I would, I'd go towards the thin blue line, but I gotta look at the.
Is there a police flag in the same way, there's, because there's a fire department flag?
And there's a first responders' flag, and we passed that, but that's for, that, this is a one-time, or the motion is for the death of the officer, but we did pass a first responders' flag.
It's now sort of a fire department one? Separate from?
Correct, there is, yes. Further council, Deputy Mayor Forrest, you, you had the floor, and we kind of had a conversation, so I revert back. Do you have?
Do we have the, so, we're not clear on exactly what flag we're talking about then? Is that to the proponent of the motion?
I'm just asking. Thin blue line.
Okay. And what, and what flag, what flag is that?
It's this right here. Well, look it up on your phone.
It looks like the American flag with the black and white with a blue line through.
Right, pull it up. Okay.
And it just represents law enforcement community in the United States, the Thin Blue Line flag.
And do we have, in our policy, what is, I have, I don't have the policy in front of me. It talks about a lot of different flags that could be of concern, and do we have, do we have that policy?
Well, it's not political, not religious.
Is it, is it not political, though? I mean, I feel like that's.
You think the Blue Lives Matter?
I'm not saying I think, but.
Yeah, really? I mean, that.
All right. Is there a possible, is, is it? I don't know.
So, I would not say that the Thin Blue Lives flag is political, as it's in support of law enforcement across the country. And I mean, if we're going to go with, you know, possible political flags, I mean, political is social movements, right? So, there's plenty of flags that have been flown or requested to be flown that have social movements attached to them. So, I guess the question would be, when does it not become a political flag, if we're going to say supporting officers, which is what that represents is, you know, activism in some type of way?
What if?
And it's for one, it's for the, just the duration of the day for the funeral.
What if we flew the first responder flag that we've already agreed to?
I think the first responders' flag is orange.
Right, I'm, but that's what it stands for.
Yeah, but that's more for public works and, and, you know, the orange was for public works, the red is for fire, the blue is for police.
This is a police officer.
Isn't there like a just plain old blue?
Well, there's the, the police flag is the thin.
That's, that's separate from, in the same way that there's a fire department flag? I, I really wish we could clarify what we're talking about, like.
I did. The Thin Blue Line.
But that's, I don't think that's just, let me just look, give me a minute.
Yeah.
So, while we're looking at lines.
Respectfully, I'm going to ask everybody to go through the chair. Councilor Roats?
Thank you, sorry. My, so my one question, it kind of gets back to Mickey's, which is, my, my one concern is, does this, is this a slippery slope to last-minute proposals from any of us, right? Without following the procedure, and does that end up with us at any random multiple meetings a month, spending time talking about any particular flag? I think it's a lovely idea. I'm not opposed to it, I'm just wondering about the implications of it, and if there's something that we need to be, even simply looking at reminding ourselves that this is a policy that, that we're testing out this year, and that we may need to tweak it a little bit, depending on how it moves forward. I don't know, I'm just, that's the one piece, I'm just curious about how that impacts on going forward.
Thank you, Councilor Roats. Good questions, and the policy is meant to be flexible and inclusive, and it allows for councilors to bring up different flags. It does allow for that, I don't know the time period, but, Mr. Town Manager, do you recall a specific time period?
I don't have this.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
So, as far as the policy that adopted, the Section 3A says requesting procedure, and the individual group or organization who would like town council members to request a commemorative organizational flag to be adapted by town, shall make a request to the town manager's office in writing, no less than 30 days prior to request of when the flag is to be flown. After the request is reviewed by the town manager, it will be distributed to all members of the town council. So, my, I have a problem with the flag, you can choose any flag you want to fly, as I said before. My only thing here is, am I voting on amending the flag policy or not? Because if you're going to do something that's not part of this policy, then you're not following the policy. If you're changing the policy, I'm not in favor of changing your policy just within these five minutes, because we spend about five months making up this policy, and I wouldn't be in favor of just changing it right here without any discussion or any other research being done. So, if we can find a way to move forward, great, but this is going to be a problem if somebody else comes in next meeting, says they want to fly a flag tomorrow, well, how do we say no if we said yes today?
It's, it's a good question, Councilor Dirk. Further, council, Councilor Timbrow, and I have Councilor Zambro after. Councilor Timbrow.
Yeah, so just my thoughts on, on that is, this is a very time-sensitive, unprecedented situation that the entire state and the governor is recognizing on Wednesday, and I do think that, I understand what you're saying with the flag policy and how we would move forward in the future, but this is definitely something that we haven't encountered before, and I do think that there's room for the tragedy and vastness of the situation. It's, you know, a very specific thing that happened that's being recognized as a whole. It's not a niche group, it's not something that one part of the state is recognizing and another part is not, so I would say that differentiates it in this circumstance from, you know, just this happening randomly again in a small sector, because it's, that's what makes it different. That would be my thoughts.
So, I'm sorry.
Hold on. Councilor Zambro.
So, I have some, some issues here. I think there was, there was time to have this added to the agenda as an amendment earlier, where we could have had some more time to actually look into this and really consider it, and I'll just say, I, I will absolutely not support the Thin Blue Line flag, if that's the flag that's, that's the decision. That flag was either created, or at least became very prevalent in direct response to the Black Lives Matter protests. It's viewed as antagonistic, even if you don't see it that way, and I, I don't think that's a good flag to fly, especially not with further discussion. I'd be open to other ideas, but absolutely not this one. And I do think, if, if this is something that could be worked into, the policy is making it more flexible, I think that's a, a fair point. Like, if something comes up like this to add more last-minute requests, I think that's, that's a fair point to consider, as we're going forward to see how this policy works out. But this is, this is just not enough to, to consider, and I won't support this flag.
Thank you, Councilor Zambro. Further council comments? Councilor Clancy, then Councilor Zambro.
No, I would just say, I think that the, the whole, already placing the flag at half-mast is.
My mistake.
I mean, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think putting it at half-mast is already what we do to recognize this kind of situation, and that's what we've done for everybody else in that situation. So, I, I think, given that that's what we normally do, and that we can do that without having to change the flag policy or vote on it every single time, I think that that's appropriate.
Thank you, Councilor Clancy. Councilor Timbrow.
So, again, just responding to that, I think that there's a difference between the state and the governor directing towns to do something versus the town making, taking initiative on their own, which is what we're asking to do, it's on behalf of the town, not following the governor's directive, and also in response to Councilor Zambro's. The Thin Blue Line flag was around before the Blue Lives Matter flag. They're two different flags, and we're talking about the Thin Blue Line flag, not the Blue Lives Matter flag.
Thank you, Councilor Timbrow. Further, council, council Roats?
What, so, so the state is, the state is flying a flag on Wednesday? Or they're just lowering?
I don't know if they're flying a flag, off the top of my head, I know they're lowering.
Oh, okay. All right. Because it would make sense if they were flying the flag, and we had a similar, that would make sense. If the, so I'm not, yeah, never mind, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Roats. And I would be in favor of following the state personally, that's, you know, one person, if the state is flying a certain flag on Wednesday in honor of the officer in the funeral, but again, that's just me, and I don't know what the state is doing, Councilor Roats. Further, Council, Councilor Carbone?
Thank you, Mayor. I think everybody makes some very valid points. I think timing is an issue with this, obviously. Again, it's very, it's unprecedented, right? Because now we have this new policy, we're trying to work within the limits of, but then something like this comes up, where we think as a community, we'd wanna, you know, show our respects and honor, so maybe to Councilor Dirk's point, maybe that's something we should discuss, maybe amending this policy to allow not people to come up to the podium, obviously, and to say, "I wanna flag flown tomorrow," but for council members to request flags to be hung within a certain timeframe, because things happen, right? Things come up that we don't always have thirty days' notice for. So, I do believe that the, I'm fully in favor of flying the thin blue line flag on Wednesday in honor of this fallen officer, and I think there is a motion on the table for that, correct? Is that what we have right now, we're working with?
Yep.
So, yeah, I would support that.
Thank you, Councilor Carbone. Further discussion. Deputy Mayor Forrest?
This being presented, obviously, for the first time here, not hearing or seeing any of this before, and even just figuring out what the flag was, I quickly went onto Wikipedia, just generally here.
That's reliable.
It may or may not be, but right now, Wikipedia's indicating the thin blue line symbol to be used by the Blue Lives Matter movement since 2014. It says here, "It's become emblematic of white nationalists, neo-Nazi, and alt-right movements in the United States, particularly displayed by attendees of the Unite the Right rally in 2017, and the January 6th storming of the Capitol." That's what it says, just on the, you know, that's right here.
Well, it's on the internet, it must be true.
It's not necessarily true. Not necessarily true, but...
Careful what you say.
On journo.
But that's what it, that's what it says here. Now, I think coming up could be considered, that this not being presented to us beforehand, not following the policy, not allowing everyone to be able to take in the ability to think about this, consider it. I think it's absolutely appropriate to honor a fallen police officer, it's very important. It's very appropriate even to honor someone that's fallen in war, and so on and so forth, or just a great community member. I think there's probably an appropriate, I think flying the flag at half-mast seems to be the greatest honor that one can possibly get. I think that's pretty appropriate, and one that we're also seeing from the governor and the state of Connecticut. So, I think it seems fair to follow that particular thinking, and when maybe we see what the actual flag is and what it represents, and do more research to find out exactly if Wikipedia's not accurate, and so be it. We'll find out what that is, and if it's appropriate for our town. I'm not really sure at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Further, Council comment? If there's no further Council comment, I will call the vote. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Nay. Sue Didid, you wanna roll call?
Yes, please.
Please call the roll.
Councilor Bailey?
Aye.
Councilor Carbone?
Aye.
Councilor Clancy?
No.
Councilor Dirk?
No.
Councilor Roats?
No.
Councilor Timbrow?
Yes.
Councilor Zambrello?
No.
Councilor Forrest?
Abstain.
And Mayor Lester?
No.
So, that was M1. Is there any other new business? And before we leave this, I will just ask that we see what the governor and the state of Connecticut is doing on Wednesday. It is more than appropriate to follow the state, in my view, and I ask the town manager to see what the state is doing, and we do wanna respect and pay tribute to our fallen officer. So, I ask the town manager to follow the lead of the state of Connecticut, which we are doing at this point with the flying of the flags half-mast, and it certainly is a terrible tragedy. Moving on from new business, there's no more, we're in Item N, ordinances and resolutions for introduction, N1, Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is in regards to a, for a contract with the Department of Economic Community Development for supplemental certified local government grant, and this is for work being done on the old academy building. And this for introduction only, there's gonna be a public hearing at our next meeting, and we'll have Vlada here at that time to present, and you can ask and answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Are you accepting questions at this time?
Yeah, what's on the... It's for introduction only, so it's just for information. If you have any specific questions, I can make sure...
Any questions that he can relay on to Vlada? Seeing none, we move on to Item N2, Mr. Town Manager.
Similarly, this is another grant that, again, this is by becoming a certified local government, we're able to apply for these funds, and this, again, is for old academy. One of these is for twenty thousand, the other is for thirty thousand, and we're just applying for the funds, and this to do the architectural work required for that building.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Questions from the council? Seeing none, we will move on to Item O, which is our second public comment section. Anybody from the public who should speak? Yes, please.
Ashley Moore, 394 Walcott Hill Road. The thin blue line flag is an anti-black racist symbol. It is absolutely political, and it is used to promote hatred and oppression and violence against people of color. And it would be deeply shameful if Weathersfield flew that flag, and I encourage everyone to consider that. And if this comes up again in further discussions, I really hope that you all look deeply into the history and the meaning of that flag, and you choose not to fly it.
Thank you. Further public comment? Yes, sir.
Hello. Hello. I'm Mark Rich, 199 Wells Road. I agree with everything that was said before me, and with what was presented by Councilor Zambrello. I believe that flying that flag would be almost a disservice to the fallen trooper, and we should fly the first responders' flag at half-mast instead, because I do think those flags are politicized and divisive, and would just not be, would not sit well in our community. And I find it kind of, almost like opportunistic that it was added to the agenda after, and it's kind of, it's kind of strange, like, and we're all not on the same page, like, I still feel like we, like, all of us in the room, like, aren't a hundred percent certain what flag we're even talking about. So, it kind of just, like, makes me feel like, is it about honoring the fallen trooper, or is it about flying a specific flag instead? So, that's what I have to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Further public comment? Mr. Young?
Good evening again. Robert Young, 20 Capin Hill Road. Earlier in the public, the first public comment section, we had a person that called up here and spoke tonight about the schools, and related to how our schools are in terrible condition, that heating and cooling systems aren't working properly, the students have to wear jackets, if I remember correctly, from what that person said, out of season, the roof leaks, tires are falling from the ceilings, rooms are too small. It just went on. Now, let's get back to the roofs that leak. We have contracts with a company that's supposed to be keeping track of our roofs, all of our roofs in town, and recommending to have them fixed. If that company is not doing their job, then they should be relieved of the contract that we have with them. If they are doing the job, and they're saying that the roof should be repaired, or replaced, whatever, and we don't do it, it's the town council's fault. It's the town manager's fault. Why are these, why does somebody go in line and write that the roofs are leaking? When we have contracts with companies, a company, we signed one not long ago, with some company, I don't recall their name. But the fact is, and same with cooling, we have experts, our own people that work for the town of Weathersfield are incompetent to check out our roofs, to check out our roofs and make sure that they're safe and they're not leaking. So, we have to go out and hire contractors, and we pay a gross amount of money to get these people to come out and check our roofs. Then we have citizens that say the roofs are leaking. I've lived in this town for thirty years, I've paid taxes every year, and I've come to meetings, and I've heard about all this work that has to be done, and it's, I expect it to be done. If it's not being done, it should come up on the table, here, in this meeting hall. Why isn't, why is the roof leaking, when we have professionals who are responsible? If they're not doing their job, fire the buggers, get rid of them, they're not worth anything to us. And if our own people are saying, "Don't repair it," that person's gotta go to them. Because we don't want our roof leaking. We don't want people to think that, "We don't take care of our property." Year after year, "You don't take care of your property." I think this person that came up here said that we don't do the right thing with our property. Why don't we? I think it's because of the town council and the town managers. And I don't mean just this one, the prior ones, but it's up to this one now, since he's in this position. He should be stepping up and taking care of it. It should be replaced, if it needs replacing. Do it. Because if your referendum doesn't pass, and I hope it doesn't, you're stuck with a leaky roof, if you do have a leaky roof. Maybe that citizen is saying something that she saw, or saw use a girl, and it got repaired. We don't know. It's up to the town to go out and investigate these allegations, and that's what these are, allegations against the town for not doing their duty. And if we don't go out and investigate and find out and report back to us, the citizens, then we got a serious problem all over the place. And I see my thirty-five seconds are really cranking along. But anyway, we don't take care of our properties. Everybody knows it, and we keep expanding, don't we? "Oh, we've now got Keisha Farm to take care of." Another big, big ball of money that we're gonna just keep throwing in to a big dark hole, so some few people can have a good time, and everybody else will pay. Another issue, tonight somebody spoke about bikes. My understanding is that bike trail from Glastonbury to Weathersfield has already cost the state of Connecticut thirteen million dollars. Thirteen million dollars, Mayor! And now the guy comes up here, and he petitioned for it, now he's up here petitioning, he wants more money for bikes!
Thank you, Mr. Young.
Yeah.
Do I have further?
Do your duty, Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Further public comment? Yes, sir.
Chris Hall, Garden Street, 46 Garden Street. Just something on the bike trails that I was thinking of. We gotta keep in mind, when we look at the plans and the proposals, we have to be aware that there's also plans and proposals to increase parking, which will allow more cars, and we have to keep in mind, it has to be a balance between increased bikes, increased cars, followed into the same area. There's gonna be some things happening if it's not done correctly, that's, that's all I have to say, because it's a big, it's gonna be a big, you know, issue coming up. So, keep it in mind, we have to mend and meld together all these plans and ideas, they're all great, but some of them don't work together unless they're modified. That's, that's all I kinda ask. People have asked me about it, because I'm on some committees, I don't know everything, but I think that is one common denominator that has to be checked out. That's all.
Thank you, Chris. Further public comment? Yes, please.
I'm Christine Calasasella. I wasn't coming here tonight, but I was watching this on my phone, and I am so ashamed of what I heard, when someone on this council recommended flying the flag for a fallen officer, and I am very upset. I don't know if any of you have family in law enforcement, or friends, and have lost anybody, but to sit here and have your own perception, say that that flag is not appropriate, it's awful. It's embarrassing for our town. And to ask, "Well, what is this town doing?" You continually sit here and say, "Weathersfield, we want to be this. We want to do, we don't wanna do that." And I forgive me if it was infield, that didn't wanna fly the flags, or what have you. Weathersfield wants to, so stand up, endure the right thing. Don't sit here with your own perception and say, "Well, I don't know, I don't think that's right," because there's a lot of people that don't perceive the flags that you approved the same way. But there's a woman who lost her husband, there are two children who lost their father, and he did it because the state of Connecticut put forth a grant for him to pull people over who weren't wearing seat belts. He's dead. And I'm just so upset, that you can all say, "Well, we don't really know, we know what it's answered for." Go look at retired Weathersfield police officer's house, they fly them. So, they don't stand for something negative. When you first instituted this flag thing, and I was here at the meeting, and I spoke against it, I said, "Keep the flags you have, the town, state, Weathersfield, what, how you, the POW." And six POWs or veterans spoke and said, "Please leave a flag that we fought for." You didn't listen to them. So, okay. So, you never said, "A flag can't be proposed at any given time." You said, "It has to be presented by a council member." You didn't say, "We're gonna do a law on one shot, maybe I missed that meeting." I know what you did, but that's not what you said. It needs to be presented by a council member, and I will go back and look at the meeting. I didn't have time for that. But I watched that meeting, and my heart is breaking. Why does a Weathersfield be the leader? Raise the flag. Who cares what people think? You're doing it in honor of somebody who lost his life, protecting all of you and us. That's all I want to say. I'm very sorry that you all think, you know, you all have a flag you wanted to raise. Well, think about this poor family, and the community of police officers. It could be any one of our cops, any given day. So, just think about that. You never said that all had to be presented at the same time, from what I recall. So, take a vote. If, if Weathersfield be a leader, we don't have to follow everybody else. That's it. It's upsetting, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Christine. Further public comment? Yes, Robin?
Robin Marassa, 248 Dale Road. So, I come to the meetings just because I think it's important to be involved and to be educated on what's going on, and when I don't come, I watch them on TV. And I thought this meeting was going pretty smoothly until the discussion came up about the flag. I don't know what's right or wrong, I do know that regarding the flag policy, that stuff like this was gonna happen. And it came up, and it was presented by Council Bailey regarding someone that chose to protect us, as somebody in the audience said, Christine, and gave his life up for that, for us. He's not the first one in this state or country, he's certainly not gonna be the last. We are seeing an enormous amount of problems, attacks, and murders against our law enforcement. I also have friends and family that are in law enforcement, and I'm not sure if any of you guys do. I think this was something that was presented to honor this man who gave his life, and I don't think there's anything political with the thin blue line. Sorry, Councilor Zambrello, that was incorrect information, that was false, that it was created to go against Black Lives Matter. There are also many hundreds of thousands of officers of color, so I'm not sure how that goes against Black Lives Matter either. That being said, I concur with Christine Lasella, that this has become too uber-political when we're trying to honor a fallen policeman. We had someone from Weathersfield who passed away, I believe in Hartford, last year. I see signs on people's lawns honoring him. Again, I think this is definitely something that we could raise the bar in Weathersfield. One day is all we're asking for this flag. I'm not sure what the problem is, but remember that when you have to call 911. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Further public comment? Further public comment? Thank you, but no, only, we're just checking. Appreciate that. So any other who have, who has not spoken, public comment? Going once, going twice, okay. Counselors, we do not have executive session tonight, so I will take a motion to adjourn, please.
It's not moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion, meeting is adjourned, thank you.